And Sylvester, the current mayor of Daly City. I'd like to welcome you back to Navigating Tense Times, number two. The last time we heard from a lot of folks from the community, nonprofits, and even our chief of police and city staff. And we continue to provide this dialogue to hear from our community during these tense times. So I don't want to take up a lot of time. It looks like we have quite a few speakers this evening. We do have a list already, and additional folks may chime in as well. So we will do the best to coordinate and moderate this discussion. What I'd like to do is offer my council colleagues a one or two-minute update or brief in welcoming folks. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our vice mayor, Justlyn Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mayor Sylvester. I want to thank you for this opportunity for the continued discussion to hear from our community members. And I know that there has been many opportunities that those have given us through this moment today and from the previous discussion and through correspondence to us as council. And I know that this is a moment for us to respond during these tense times with Black Lives Matter, the systemic racism that has occurred far too long, and looking at the use of force policies that were shared with us last week from our DC.
Ben Sylvester, the current mayor of Daly City. I'd like to welcome you back to navigating tense times. Number two, the last time we heard from a lot of folks from the community nonprofits, and even our chief of police and city staff. And we continue to provide this dialogue to hear from our community during these tense times. So I'm not, I don't want to take up a lot of time. Looks like we have quite a few speakers this evening. We do have a list already, and additional folks may chime in as well. So we will do the best to coordinate and moderate this discussion. What I like to do is offer my council colleagues a one or two minute update or brief in welcoming folks. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our vice mayor, Justin Manalo. Justin?
Thank you so much, Mayor Sylvester. I want to thank you for this opportunity for the continued discussion to hear from our community members. And I know that there has been many opportunities that those have given us through this moment today and from the previous discussion and through correspondence to us as council. And I know that this is a moment for us to respond during these tense times with Black Lives Matter, the systemic racism that has occurred far too long. And looking at the use of force policies that was shared with us last week from our DCPD. We are here to listen to each and every one of you today. We're here to listen to the community, to the people. And I am looking forward to hear from our community and my colleagues today. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to welcome everyone on this call and on the Zoom conference. The thing that I, I'm a little bit frustrated with in doing these kind of things is we get to hear from you, but we can't really dialogue with you back and forth. So I wanted to let you know that just because we don't affirm what you say or react to what you say, we are listening very carefully. And it's just, it's not the kind of meeting where we can just go back and forth with each other. We're more here to listen to your thoughts and ideas and take it all in. And hopefully, we reach a consensus at some point to discuss implementing perhaps some of the ideas. So I want to apologize if that's the format. And it's frustrating to me because I like talking to you and I like getting information back and having that dialogue. But really, today, tonight is about listening and hearing from you on your thoughts and ideas. So thank you for coming and look forward to the dialogue. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. And next, we'll go to Dr. Rod Dasmagbual, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I just prepared a little statement for this meeting. So I just want to welcome Daly City community and those that are joining us on our second open session focusing on Black Lives Matter and we can do moving forward. So our city council last week passed a support resolution endorsing the model ethnic studies curriculum that focuses on interdisciplinary study of race, ethnicity, and indigeneity with an emphasis on experiences of people of color in the United States. The passage of, the passage is connected to the Black Lives Matter movement to understand the inequities of our society and how the oppression of black people have shaped our institutions to become systems of hierarchy and generational exploitation. As a city council member, I interpret this resolution as a starting place to understand how we as a city can address inequities at the personal, local, and global levels and centering how we, how these issues have furthered the exploitation of black lives. So I urge my fellow colleagues to move beyond our symbolic gesture, but to embody the change and to move towards action. I strongly urge our council to take action our upcoming meeting on Monday, July 13th, to address demands that were created by the Daly City for Black Lives Matter petition that has, I believe, over 370 signatures. And this is what they said. So they demanded that we take a look or that we take the following actions to actively reimagine what public policy looks like in our city. That our leadership pledges to launch a community work group by the summer 2020 to design a community oversight police commission, which will provide comprehensive community oversight and ensure accountability and transparency to the Daly City Police Department. This community group should involve a variety of community stakeholders that represent very different perspectives and should at least include a member of the Daly City for Black Lives, a Daly City Youth Commissioner, a member of a community organization directly serving marginalized families, a parent or guardian, an educator, a small business owner, diversity in racial identities, diversity in socioeconomic status. And number two, explore different ways of redistributing our budget to reflect our Daly City values that that focuses on creative ways to work within our city and county to provide sources that improves the wellness of our community, ways that we can fund COVID-19 and relief recovery, maybe funding alternatives to policing such as the crisis assistance helping out on the streets, cahoots, restorative justice programs, and trauma-informed practices, youth enrichment and recreation programs for leadership development, mental and physical health, and social emotional learning, funding affordable housing developments, increased funding for community centers, libraries that serve as safe places for youth, families, and seniors, more support for seniors, additional educational resources, redirect annual allocations to essential infrastructures and critical services, arts and culture that address and uplift the diversity of our community. We should also draft and pass a resolution that acknowledges our support for the Black Lives Matter movement. And I believe our county created a resolution. So if we need something to refer to, we could look at that, that we are in solidarity of their efforts. So I just want to conclude today by a quote by Martin Luther King Jr., where he said, "A nation that continues, continues year after year to spend more money on military defense than on programs of social uplift is approaching spiritual doom." I believe that we've got to a point in our society and a point in our history where dehumanization has become normalized and that we must look at what we value as a city, as a nation, and the world, and reflect how we invest our resources to creating peace, understanding, love, and hope. So I think that just listening to some of the feedback that I got from the first meeting, it really boils down to my short statement because I hear that. I hear the statements. I've heard the testimonies. I've heard the emotions that are, that are going. And I think when places of leadership, we have to have the courage to explore these, these demands. So thank you, and I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Good, Dr. Rod. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues. I'll make it short so we won't take up the time for the people. I too would like to welcome everyone here. And we, I think, with the one thing we, I would to listen to all points of view and to look at what we have in Daly City and how are we Daly City compared to nationwide. The sadness and the grief is unmeasurable on many things that have happened in other places. But what is applicable to Daly City is that we definitely, on all points of views, wants to make sure that, that there are no inequities in our, in our city, no matter where it is, systemically or not, which I don't believe that we have a problem. We need to look at our policies, which I think the chief is going to go over, and how we stand out by being ahead of everyone else. And we've already taken a lot of actions and so that people can be informed. What do we already have in Daly City? What are the checks and balances that are already here? Thankfully, is why we want to live in Daly City? Why do all the diversity want to live in Daly City? There's diversity in other places, but I really think that we are proud to be the central of having over 70% foreign-born in Daly City says a lot. And when you talk to people in the community, they feel safe and welcoming. We want to make sure that that continues. So I look forward to hearing all points of view. And the, the common goal is to make sure that people are well-informed on what we do have in Daly City and what we've done to be proactive in Daly City with what we have. And I, then we can just have discussions with our colleagues and with our, looking forward to hearing from our speakers tonight, as well as our Daly City PD. And they'll be speaking on policies and things that they're doing and taking action. So from the last one as well, people know that they were already proactive in some of the other things. So daily, very proud to be in Daly City. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues. And look forward to hearing from all our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Okay, before I turn it over and open it up, we do have a few speakers. I thought I'd check in with our city officials. I'll start with City Manager Shauna Maltby. Do you have any updates you might want to share so that the group is aware? Maybe we can erase some redundancy this evening? Anything?
I'm sure. Do you want Stephen or I to speak about the letters that have come in? You know, we, I don't think we'll be reading all of them. I think that the city clerk has forwarded them all to city council. Stephen, do you know the number that we received?
We received over 300. They were delivered to us.
Okay. And they are in varying opinions. Obviously, you may not have had the opportunities and some of them have only come in today to read all of them, but definitely have gotten a lot more feedback from the community as of today.
Thank you, City Manager Ms. Maltby, and we will do our best. I believe we do have a few speakers tonight and will read off a few of the letters that I'm aware of. And for the most part, they seem to have been written on a template. So they're basically, most are the same. So we'll play that by ear as we move ahead. Chief Hensley, thank you for being on board. And I thought before we get started, I'd check in with you to see if there's any updates for this particular meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers and the community that are here with us to talk about these important issues. Yeah, we would like to provide some updates. So we have some use of force policy updates that we've been working through diligently with the Police Officer Association, Police Officer Association attorneys, and our city attorney. It's okay with you. We'll go over those policy updates. We'd also like to talk about the community engagement that the police department does. And that was brought up by the council at the last meeting. And we kind of ran out of time and didn't get a chance to talk about all the great things the police department does in the community now. And I don't even know if all the council members are aware of those things. So we'll put those up for you so you can take a look at those also. And then the last thing we'll share, and this won't take a lot of time, but the last thing we'll share is, you know, what are some of the partnerships that the police department has forged over time that exist now to help us with these issues that we talk about when we talk about reimagining? You know, the three primary issues that come up all the time are people dealing with mental health issues, people who are homeless, and people suffering from severe addictions. And those are three populations we deal with fairly regularly here in Daly City. So we'll kind of cover some of the other organizations in the county and in the city that we utilize to our benefit to try and bring resources to those populations so that we're not dealing with them over and over and we can try and improve those lives. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Captain Cameron Christianson now, who will, once Stephen allows him, he'll share the screen and we'll go through these slides with all of you.
Thank you so much, Chief. You know what? I think that's a good idea so that at least the folks on board can have some transparency or the best full transparency as possible so that when the comments are coming up, we won't have to repeat or reiterate. And I think that would be a good idea and then we can get the ball rolling. So go ahead, Captain Christianson, if you would go ahead and proceed, then we'll get right into the community.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. First, can you see the screen?
Oh, yeah, I can see it.
Does it show in the slideshow view there? Okay.
Yes, yes, I can see it.
Okay, so the first one here, Agenda. The chief just covered these. We'll talk about the policy reform status that we've been discussing over the last few weeks. We'll talk about the community engagement aspect of what we do at the police department and the community. We'll talk about the professional partnerships that we have with other agencies within the county, within the city specifically, that allow us to better serve the community. So just as a brief overview, this is our current use of force policy on the Lexible Policy 300. We adopted it this year. It's compliant with current law. So just confirm, you can see the blue screen with the use of force policy reform?
Yes.
Okay. So these first two slides are no change, redundant slides. These are the compliant eightcan'twait.org policies that we have. It was the verbal warning before using deadly force, require an officer to intervene, both of which we existed or had existing in our policy prior to. This slide also remains the same. No change for the policies that will remain unchanged. And those again are the ones about shooting at a moving vehicle. While it's highly discouraged, if a vehicle is being used as a weapon to injure, kill, we give the officers the ability to utilize reasonable forces necessary. Also, the use of force continuum or matrix, which is something that is covered under current law, PC 835 A2. And our policy states that we need to evaluate each situation in light of the particular circumstance and that the officer shall use all available resources and techniques if reasonable, safe, and feasible. So this is the one that we had covered last couple of weeks ago. This was the first policy that we were able to make a change to, and this was the carotid hole. So on June 17th, the chief issued in the directive the prohibition of the use of the carotid or any chokeholds. We have since worked with the Police Officers Association, the Associated Attorneys, and the city attorney as well to draft language, which will cover the prohibited prohibition of the carotid and any chokeholds in our policy. Agreed upon policy reform number two. This covers the de-escalation aspect of the eight can't wait specifics. Our policy now is going to be rewritten, and you can see the section there, 300.33 subsection J. This language is also being reviewed by the attorneys. And the language will include officers shall employ de-escalation techniques to reduce the likelihood of force encounters. This is number three. This is comprehensive reporting. So we'll be replacing our Lexible Policy 300.5. And in doing so, we'll include language to cover the reporting requirements for intentional pointing of a firearm, as well as outlining supervisory reporting responsibilities that currently exist in practice today. The fourth policy, which is the deadly force applications, will replace a certain section of Lexible Policy 300.4. And again, this language is to include deadly force as a serious decision and only as a last resort when reasonable alternatives have been exhausted or are not feasible. All four of those policy reform changes are in line with the eight can't wait recommendations and other policies that have satisfied those recommendations from other agencies. And all of these policy languages have been reviewed and are under final review now and hope we have in our current policy either the end of this week or next week, once we can figure out logistics for ensuring that all personnel are aware and trained.
I'm going to cover community engagement a little bit. So as an example, the Daly City Police Department also has the Daly City Police Athletic League. Daly City Police Athletic League is a board of all volunteers made up of both people who work in the police department and people in our community who serve on this board. We do one main fundraiser a year, which is our golf fundraising tournament. That's our primary fundraising source. We do that every year with the intention of all the money that comes in, we're able to then distribute that money to community organizations primarily revolving around youth and youth organized sports activities. The last couple of years, we've been rewriting our mission statement for the PAL to be able to allow us to make donations to other organizations in the city, in the community that are not just geared around organized sports. So we've been, we've been doing this for many, many, many years. In fact, our PAL is the oldest police athletic league in the state of California. We've been funding police or community events for a long time. I won't read you on this, through on the list, but you can see some of the examples of the stuff we donated to or the organizations we donated to in 2019, which was almost $37,000 worth of support. 2018, very similar. We donated almost $40,000 to community causes. Again, it's both sports-related and non-sports-related. A good example of non-sports-related is the Pacific Islands Together Christmas in the Park event that they hold out in the Bay Shore. That community always feels like they don't get quite the attention they should. We recognize that, and we make a large donation to PIT to try and fund as much of that program as we can in addition to having officers there to support it so that they can buy gifts for families who may not have the ability to do so. Next up, these are the events that the police department, not, not through PAL, these are events at the police department ourselves that we support. We attend these events. We coordinate with the community organizations on these events. And in many cases, we tap into our asset forfeiture funding to be able to purchase promotional items to give out at these events. I think on average, we bring in about $10,000 a year in terms of our asset forfeiture that can only be used toward youth programs that keep kids away from gangs and drugs. Very, very strict criteria when we can use that. So we pretty much expend all of those funds every year for all of these great community events that go on, and it gives us opportunities to be out in the community, bonding with the community, being available to answer questions, and just in general to support. Before, before I have Captain Christianson cover the legislative oversight and community partners, I know council has brought up that they would like the police department to try and do more in the community. And what I would offer up to the council and to the community that's on this call is the police department is very interested in supporting additional programs. We're just looking for someone to bring those programs forward to us. So we have additional asset forfeiture funding that we can also utilize to support those programs. The criteria is a little different than the keeping kids away from gangs and drugs, but there's a whole nother set of criteria for the larger portion of our asset forfeiture funding. As an example, we can't use that funding for personnel costs, but we can certainly use it for consulting or to get a program up and running. We've, you know, we've got basketball programs up and running for library and recreation, swimming programs. We're very interested in supporting other programs that the council or the community will identify and bring to us, and we can work with you through that criteria to try and get approval to use that funding to support those ideas. I'm just, what I guess, what I'm asking is bring the ideas to us. We're very interested and we're listening, but please bring them to us. Captain Christianson will now go ahead and cover the legislative oversight and community partners.
In addition to our community engagement, we receive a lot of our feedback. There's additional legislative oversight that has been passed over the years. This one is the most notable. It's Assembly Bill 953, which was signed in 2015. It's administered by the DOJ and the California Attorney General with diverse board oversight consisting of community and experts. The Assembly Bill was identified as Racial and Identically Profiling Act, or RIPA for short. It affects all California agencies in a phased approach based on agency sworn size. So Daly City will have to start collecting data for this in 2022, and our first report will be required in 2023. Data will be collected on every person contacted during any type of enforcement. This involves calls, excuse me, involves calls for service, person stops, traffic stops. And it also requires the reporting on at least 16 data points, some of which are the date and time, the location, the reason for contact, the perceived race, the perceived gender, age, action taken, outcome, and anything that was taken for property purposes.
The reason why I wanted to cover this is we didn't get a chance to present on any of this at the last study session, and we thought it was important around the discussion of oversight that, and I said this in the last meeting, that California's got the most strict use of force laws and reporting requirements in the nation. I suspect a lot of other states will start mirroring what we're doing here in California. The RIPA Act is important because all of this information will be made, made available to the public as soon as we've done our reporting for the first year. So all we do is allow access to the information to the California Attorney General's office. We don't compile the data, they do. They'll put it all together, they'll put it all in a report. That report will be released, our first report will be released sometime probably in early 2023. It'll be available to everybody in the community, everyone in the state or anywhere else that wants to take a look at what it is, our police officers are doing, why they're doing it. Again, all these 16 data points that will really articulate really what an officer was thinking at the time he made that contact and what the disposition was in the end. So there's no other states doing anything close to that. It's already happening in California with the bigger agencies like Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, California Highway Patrol, and I think San Francisco is actually actively involved in it now. So it will hit a city our size and a police department our size in 2022. We're very much looking forward to that oversight that could be shared with the public because I think it will be, it'll be good. Thank you.
Last time, we talked a little bit about our district resources that we in the police department utilize on a daily basis to help provide services. So while we're asked to do a lot and we train a lot on things that we don't necessarily specialize in, there are plenty other county resources and local resources that we utilize to improve our abilities, especially in acute situations. So some of these groups we contact on a daily basis, others we only contact during acute needs. So Cora, the Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, is the domestic violence reporting, which we report out on every single domestic violence to this nonprofit group that provides services to victims. DC Partnerships, we utilize for homeless outreach and providing service to some of our community members when we come across those that need. San Mateo County Homeless Outreach Team is a team that we can utilize for homeless on the streets that we recognize and that would benefit from some of the services that they provide. SMARTS, which is the San Mateo County Mental Health Assessment and Referral Team, is a specialized team through the American Medical Response, AMR, who comes out and provides additional services to law enforcement during psychiatric evaluation needs to take the law enforcement component away from the environment, assuming it's a cooperative and voluntary environment. San Mateo County Healthy Aging Response Team, which we'll utilize a lot for a lot of our residents here in Daly City when we come across individuals that may need their services as well. One of the acute service opportunities is the Psychiatric Emergency Response Team, which is through San Mateo County SO. We utilize them for identified cases where we need additional services. The San Mateo County Threat Assessment Team, and there's teams for both adults and juveniles. Again, those are for more of an acute need when we identify somebody that needs additional resources and services, and those teams have countless numbers of different services and professionals attached to those teams that can provide different types of resources. San Mateo County Student Threat Assessment Team, those focus more on the schools and removing again the law enforcement component to some extent, and trying to find other services for some of the school-related resources to help some of the students. And then the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program, which we're actively involved in, and we attend meetings on a monthly basis, and we associate or assist them in all the details that they do throughout the entire county.
That concludes our presentation. If the council or anyone in the public has any questions about any of that, we're happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Chief. I just want to put out a reminder to everyone on the call this evening, as a reminder, this is a study session. No decisions will be made. We're providing the updates that have been brought about as a result of the last call. However, council has not made any particular decisions as we move forward. And there's no debate. Basically, we won't get into a dialogue where we go back and forth debating. I do see some questions that have been posed in the chat, and in a sense, it's a form of debate, but we do want to try to get to those questions and answer some of those questions if we can. So we'll keep that in mind, Stephen, we'll keep tabs of the questions coming in chat, and I think we need to give more time to those who pre-registered and those who would like to make a comment. So at any time, feel free to raise your hand. What I would like to do now is turn it over to Stephen. We had about, I think, 15 or 17 folks who wanted to speak and they pre-registered, so I think we should go down the line and start on that list.
Okay, sounds good, Mayor. Should I just start by calling out the names?
Sure, why not?
I also have a two-minute timer tonight, and I was going to share it on the screen to better, better alert people.
Okay, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Let me just share my screen real quick. Okay. So the first person on the list is Jeanette Armus.
All right.
Let me find the participant list really quickly.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay.
So my name is Janet Armus, and I've lived in Daly City for over 25 years.
Sorry, can't hear.
It's, it's very hard to hear you right now.
Is this better?
Oh, yeah, much better. Okay.
Okay. So I've lived in Daly City for over 25 years. I attended the previous study session about this topic, and a recurring suggestion that I heard from the community was the desire to invest in resources outside of the police department. I heard suggestions for non-armed organizations to respond to mental emergency calls and traffic management. I heard suggestions to invest in the youth and leadership programs and education. I also listened to a librarian say how underfunded their department is, and with the library receiving the third highest amount according to the 2019 municipal budget, it says a lot about how neglected the other departments with less money are. I would like to echo my support to reassess the budget and reallocate money from the police to other departments. I would also like to address the concerns that community members expressed about defunding the police. The phrase "defund the police" may seem scary and threatening because it leaves the false impression that the police won't exist. "Defund the police" does not mean we get rid of the police. Rather, it means that we should take some of the money that is largely budgeted to the police, which in Daly City is 40%, and disperse it to other departments and community organizations. If you fear that the police won't be able to operate without the 40%, I challenge you to question why. What evidence supports this thought? If the logic is because that's how it's always been, I would challenge you to think, why can't we do better? And more police does not mean better. The very reason we're having these study sessions is because our country is showing us the exact opposite, that more police actually means more violence. And to those of the community who want to argue that the Daly City Police is different, that they have done so much good for the community and are great people, that is not the point of the larger conversation where we should be focusing our energies. The point is that racism runs deep in a lot of our institutions.
You're gonna have to, please.
Yes, just one last statement, including the police. But because we give a lot of money and power to the police who have access to fatal weapons, who are allowed to use physical force on others, who are not held accountable for their actions, we are supporting one of the deadliest forms of systemic racism. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Armus. Next, Stephen.
Next up is Holly Lim.
Ms. Lim, you have the floor.
Thank you, good evening. I echo much of the sentiment already shared last week and in the petition to create and fund new systems to make the police accountable and to do a deep dive into the police budget so we can reprioritize spending for community services and infrastructures that will make our community safer. I also recommend looking into an independent police auditor, similar to the one in San Jose. While many city councils throughout the Bay Area have already discussed and acted to review the police budget and reprioritize spending to protect brown, indigenous, and black lives, Daly City City Council has remained silent. The lack of action and the silence is deafening. I commend Dr. Rod for his commitment today to the community's demands. I believe that if the rest of the leadership really wants to move forward, they would. The best the council has done are study sessions. There are enough studies and books on the topic, stories already shared, and black and brown lives lost at the hands of the police. Residents have rallied, sent letters, and hundreds have signed a petition with clear community demands. What else do you need to learn and study to act? Mr. Sylvester, as our leader, I can't help but think the city staff and the city council are taking your lead to do close to nothing. We all know how heavily you support the police and how much the police support you. Mayor Sylvester, are you accountable to the police or are you accountable to your constituents? Because your silence shows you're complicit with the police and the injustice communities of color have based at their hands. Mayor Sylvester and City Council, please do better. Respond to our letters. It's been a month since we've sent letters and petitions. Black and brown lives depend on your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lim. Stephen?
Okay, the next person is Marion Mann. And I will unmute you. Oh, it's not letting me.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I have lived in Daly City for almost 60 years, and I have watched the and attended the city council meetings for over 50. What I find is in the last few years, things are changing remarkably. Always in Daly City, white and black lives matter, both. Black lives matter, and so do white, Chinese, et cetera. Our, our, our police department is the best that we could possibly have now. They're very short. In a hot, with, in a city with over 100,000 people, you can have a little more than one policeman for every thousand people. That bothers me because our police department is our protectors. They are our first ones out there. I mean, what would we do without a police department like we have? They are magnificent. I hear from my seniors, well, not right now, at least 30 or 40 times a week, a month, rather, about the goodness and the, and the happiness they have with our police department. They are the ones that take the most money because they need the most money. I mean, we need them to protect us, and they, we need them to protect my children, my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren. And someone talking about defunding them, why? They barely get along now with what they need. They've only got, what, 160 police or even that? But that's my take, and I'm just going to give you the old-fashioned here from what I have over the last 60 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mann.
Okay, next we have Joanna Rosales.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and city staff. I come to you this evening to express the need to reallocate funding away from the police department and to redirect into other sectors of government. This does not mean there will be zero police. Reallocating highlights fiscal responsibility, and if done thoughtfully, can have long-term, sustainable benefits that will reduce police violence and crime. It is better use of taxpayer money by shifting the focus of these funds to social services. A police response is not appropriate in all circumstances, such as mental health crises or quality-of-life calls like homelessness. I challenge you to reimagine a system where there are many different kinds of professionals to respond to calls. Some situations are better suited for a mental health professional, a public health practitioner, conflict mediator, or a youth development expert. Other government actors should be responsible for these and receive adequate funding for doing them. In recent weeks, cities across the nation are announcing the reallocation of funds from their police departments to programs for minority communities. Minneapolis, Los Angeles, and even San Francisco are choosing to listen to the national conversation that is happening by community to reprioritize funding. Some of these municipalities have a history of police brutality, yes, but I urge you to approach this with a proactive lens rather than a reactive one. Our city still has issues, and you cannot fix systemic issues by making police more visible in the community or by diversifying the ethnicity of the police officers. In closing, I'd like to end with three action items. Number one is to pledge to reallocate funds into the community through other sectors within the government. Number two is to commit to create a community work group to work in conjunction with the police department to ensure accountability and transparency and to do so, do so before the approval of the next budget cycle. This work group can provide a clear start on how to begin analyzing and reallocating the police budget. And lastly, I urge you and everyone here to reimagine a community you want to live in. What does it look like? Is it really having armed policemen roaming the streets to protect us? I implore you all to explore what that ideal community looks like to you, to include community members in that conversation, and for staff and city council to remember this when you're putting together the city's budget for the next two years. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing what the city of Daly City does in response.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales.
Okay, next is Kalima Salahuddin.
Um, good evening, Mayor Sylvester and the rest of the council. Thanks again for having the space to allow us to speak. Um, I echo some of the comments, or most of the comments that were said previously, and I'm grateful for all those people for having the courage to speak up. Um, it fills me with hope to hear people speak on behalf of my son and my children because I don't hear that much of it um, as a member of this community. Um, I will also say that it's just to be more specific in times of COVID-19, that if we could do less policing in in the communities of color in Daly City, and that also correlates with income. Uh, there's a lot of non-homeowners, and we've reinstated traffic enforcement, and so I already see tickets being written for things like expired tags, which is more prevalent in communities of color due to the income level, and also you're a higher rate to get a ticket here because we're not allowed to get permits because I'm also a renter if you're not a homeowner, which is also more heavily people of color. So if things, there's things that we could do now, policy rise to kind of disengage enforcement in communities of color. I will also say that in one of the comments, Mayor Sylvester was challenged as a black man. I would also remind folks that he is a black man and has, as a black man, walked through this life and experienced the same oppression as every other black person. It's not solely the responsibility of black people to solve this issue because we didn't create it. So I think folks can stand down on those type of comments, and let's be respectful. Um, I agree with all the sentiments, but I still feel like we could say that in a way that doesn't reinforce certain racial stereotypes and stuff, that we have to be the ones to solve the problem because it's reflective of us. So I just want to toss that out there. Um, I'm hoping that we can continue this conversation as a school board members and city councils to talk about how we could work together also with policing in our schools and how we can find better ways to do that. So I'm looking forward to future discussions, and thank you again for having these conversations.
Thank you, Ms. Salahuddin.
Okay, next is Nick Ochi Pinti.
Yes, hello, community. Yeah, um, thank you, um, trusty Saludin for those comments as well, and I want to echo a lot of what people are saying. Just, um, looking at the last few weeks, you know, this process in Daly City, we just started. Um, and it's something I think we all appreciate, but I do want to to state that we are the largest city in San Mateo County, and people look to us for leadership. And I think that in the last few years, we've seen a number of issues come from the community that raise that question to us. Um, when we're talking about as a city that embraces our immigrant community and generations of that, yet we're seeing ICE raids and and people being handed over. And so, um, even though the the council hasn't addressed this, um, in words, it's something that we need, an action that speaks louder. And, um, the community coming out to speak about these things, I do want to applaud some of the progress we've seen that Police Department stepped up with in terms of addressing "A Can't Wait." Uh, I still want to entone that, um, addressing all eight of policies cited by "A Can't Wait", uh, the campaign are a minimum, but the the problem really goes beyond that, and people have already spoken to this. We've seen Minneapolis take action. We've seen Los Angeles take action and actually vote by a vote of four to one in their budget committee to reallocate one hundred thirty-three million. Um, just today, we have the mayor of Berkeley announcing that they're gonna cut nine point two million. And these cuts, like people have said, aren't cuts to eliminate policing. They're cuts to put money in the services that police are addressing without having that kind of jurisdiction. So we're looking at another discussion and a next discussion, but we need policy action now. We need to look at the budget immediately. So that's the kind of discussion we look forward to, not maybe at the end of summer, but really at the end of this meeting and in the next regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ochi Pinti.
Okay, next is LeAnn Young.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hi. Um, so in terms of of what I had started to comment from the last meeting, I think there needs to be more events where police actually meet youth and adults and young adults and older adults, et cetera. Um, and I think that the community needs to meet with the police department so that they actually see us as individuals, you know, some, uh, when you're more active in the community, then the police actually do know your face. Um, so I think, uh, several people mentioned about defunding or reallocating money. I think, um, if you're going to be looking at how you're, if you if you are going to reallocate any monies or that sort of thing, I think, um, if possible, to include, like you say, either a a community committee to give some input as well. Uh, there are some of us that don't really fit into some of these existing organizations or don't even know about some existing cultural organizations um, within Daly City to be able to participate. So even, um, what I find is that Daly City defunded a lot of library and parks and recreation programs that I think were very important for the community. And so I'm a very, uh, uh, I mean, I I support the libraries and and parks and recreation and, um, community programs. I just think that citywide, I think if citywide it's supported, that says a big statement. And I think it's good to involve some other organizations, but then I think if you only allot so much money, then it'll only limit who you're going to reach as well. So, um, I'm just trying to think about how you can, um, offer programs that will encourage diversity rather than just including one or two groups uh, because sometimes often that's, um, maybe what I I'm thinking might occur instead. Uh, I know that, um,
We just.
Gone to a couple of events at Jefferson with the county supervisor, Canapa, involved with all the different cultural things like celebrating culture, um, and maybe having more police involvement and presence to get to know people.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Okay, next on the list is Danielle Bell.
Good evening. I thank you and commend you all for holding this meeting. It's really important that make the space for these kinds of conversations. I listened last week, and I was left with a few important questions. Um, one being with the use of force statistics. It's great to see those numbers going down, but we know that part of the problem goes beyond police brutality. It's also the racialized reality of it. Well, it's great that we have RIPA in the future. I echo the comment in the chat wondering what's going to be happening in the interim. Will Daly City Police Force be voluntarily adopting the system sooner so that we can learn about possible implicit bias or other problems within the precinct? In addition to that, we know through ports, through reports by Washington Post, New York Times, CNN, and many other major news sources that white supremacist infiltration is a major problem in police forces around the nation. So I would encourage people of the police station and the city council to think about ways that that can be accounted for, ways that it can be prevented, and ways that people can become aware of problems that may be existing. Piggybacking off of that is my third concern. Many police officers who stand against fellow officers committing police brutality are often fired and reprimanded. So I'm wondering what kind of whistleblower protections can be implemented within the police program? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Okay, next on the lease on the list is Arlene Dasmagwal.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Dr. Arlene Dasmagwal, and my pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm the chair for the Daly City Arts and Culture Commission, and I'm also, I also work for the Division of Equity and Community Inclusion, and I teach ethnic studies at San Francisco State. I want to thank the city for putting together this study session. I do hope that these study sessions will result in an action plan from the city relatively soon because I have been very patient with a response from the city, and I'm feeling a little dissatisfied with the lack of urgency to address what is happening in the world today. Black lives matter, and if black people are free, we all get to be free. Today's uprisings reflect the historical tension of the past and present. We are now in the middle of this tension, and we are forming what the future may look like for Daly City. This movement is holding up a mirror to racist ideologies, racist institutions, racist relationships, and most of all, a mirror to ourselves. We are in desperate need of leadership that can shift Daly City's infrastructures and priority priorities to actively address systemic racism and to reimagine what public safety looks like. In this month alone, we've seen dozens of cities take action to disband and defund police departments, while Daly City has delayed real and meaningful steps and actions. We have yet to see a letter written and signed by the council on your solidarity for black lives and how you will show up to address and respond to racial injustice. We must always value people over property and profits, that the idea of lifting up capitalism over people who have been harmed is part of the maintenance of white supremacy and capitalism. Prioritizing property over people is capitalism and anti-blackness. This is an opportunity to reimagine a world that we live in that allows us to be our full selves and redefine safety and security. Here are some things that we can do. We can pass a resolution supporting Black Lives Matter and how you will stand in solidarity. Create a police oversight committee that includes representatives of our diverse city. Create a human rights commission, not a human relations commission, to address the human rights violation violations that occur in our city. And study the city hall and its services. How many staff and administrators are black? What are you doing to recruit, hire, and retain black people within city hall and its services? And lastly, create a department and institutionalize it within city hall to address equity and community inclusion in Daly City and to supervise the police oversight committee and the human rights committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dasmagwal.
Hey, next we have Nancy Rodriguez.
Thank you, Arlene, for everything that you said. I'm also on the Arts and Culture Commission. But I also just, I keep hearing about, um, a lot of changes within the policies, and I recognize that that actually is critical to actually implement change and that we have to address it at the policy level. But I don't hear a lot, like I hear about training. Thank you, Dr. Rod, um, Dasmagwal, for, um, really pushing the ethnic studies because I do believe it begins with education. I am entering my twenty-fifth year in education and working primarily with black and brown students, particularly immigrant students. So just kind of recognizing, um, something that councilwoman Pamela mentioned, that we have seventy percent immigrants, um, in Daly City. And so recognizing that, um, the issue with police is a universal problem. So a lot of times, like one of my neighbors said they were driving, they saw, um, uh, like, I think it must have been a ranger in a green uniform. They wanted a duck because they thought it was immigration. So recognizing that we have to find ways to actually better support all of our communities, including our, um, our Latino, our Afro-Latino, our black communities, our also indigenous communities, and really understand our history. And the other thing about like educating our youth, at no point have I heard about reeducating our police. I recognize that they do a lot of work, but as a teacher, I'm constantly reeducating. I have been reading and reeducating myself to figure out how to best support our students and working on, um, on things around anti-racism. The school where I work has really pushed anti-racism for years and tried to re-educate, have uncomfortable conversations, checking ourselves, checking our own privilege, even as Latino, black, um, different community members, we check our privileges, but also recognizing how is the police reeducating themselves, learning about cultures, learning about some of the fears that are universal, that for seventy percent of our population are in my community. Having the police around may actually just, um, from the beginning, already inclocate fear. So how do we change that? How do we reform that? And so I really appreciate what Dr. Arlene mentioned, um, because I do think it is a beginning, the Human Rights Commission. I do think it's about educating also our police, and not to underestimate, but I think if we have to keep educating ourselves as teachers, why not the police as well?
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, next we have Lalo Gonzalez.
Hi. Good afternoon, city council and staff. Thank you for hosting another listening session for the community. I think this is definitely a step in the right direction to hear more about the community's concerns. Given our time with the global pandemic that has only highlighted the social inequities black, indigenous, and people of color navigate. I hope there are more conversations to come and that those conversations are followed by action that reflects what we are hearing today. I strongly believe that this is the time to prioritize the essential needs and services that have been exacerbated since the start of this pandemic. This looks like de-prioritizing the city's police budget for this upcoming fiscal year and years to come. For much of U.S. history, law enforcement met implementing laws that were explicitly designated to subjugate black people and enforce white supremacy and capitalism. That's why black people, along with hundreds of thousands of others, are calling for city, state, and federal governments to abolish policing as we currently understand it. We must divest from excessive, brutal, and discriminatory policing and invest in a vision of community safety that works for everyone, not just the elite few. At this point, reform is not enough. We know the safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. What we're looking for already exists, and we already know it works. We need to look no further than neighborhoods where there is easy access to living wages, healthcare, quality public education, and freedom from police terror. When we talk about defunding the police, we're talking about making a major pivot in national priorities. We need to see a shift from massive spending on police that don't keep us safe to a massive investment in a shared vision of community, um, of community safety that actually works. We know this won't happen overnight. Ending police violence will require a thoughtful, deliberate, and participatory approach that has already begun. The exploding COVID-19 pandemic and disproportionate, um, impacts on our black community have shown us what happens when the government underfunds public health while overfunding police and military budgets. Thank you for your time. I look forward to more of these conversations.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, next up is Lee Akila.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Lee Akila, the president of the Daly City Police Officers Association. I wanted to take a minute to speak about the budget for the police department. While the police department is a significant portion of the city's budget, the Daly City Police Department has consistently done more with less. We have one of the lowest officer-to-population ratios in the county and spend over ten million dollars less on the police department than the two other cities in the counter in the county with similar populations. There's also been a lot of talk regarding, uh, police use of force and police violence and police brutality. I have not heard a lot of examples or any examples of this in the city of Daly City, and I think that the reason for a lot of this is that the men and women of the Daly City Police Officers Association are extremely professional. They're well-trained. The department has been releasing its use-of-force statistics for two years. We're one of the only cities in the area, with the exception of San Jose, to publicly release all of our use-of-force data. And what we know, when we look at the use-of-force data, is that the use of force by police is extremely rare. About point one percent of our contacts with citizens result in any kind of use of force. And the vast majority of those use of forces are physical only. In other words, officers use their hands or body weight in order to control someone and take them into custody. But we're extremely proud of the relationships that we have in the city. We have good relationships with various community organizations. A lot of people have asked that they want to get to know us better. I would encourage everyone to reach out to the police department. We're more than welcome to host them, to talk to them, to go on ride-alongs with them, to meet with them. Anything that we can do in order to improve our relationship with the community, we are open to do. I just want to close by saying that we're very happy and proud of our relationships with the city of Daly City and the citizens. Our officers come to work every day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, in order to help out and answer calls for service, and we're more than welcome to engage and continue in dialogue. Thank you for your time. And we're more than welcome to engage and continue in dialogue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Akila.
Okay, next up we have Lauren Dos.
My name is Lauren Dos and I am a library trustee for Daily City and an ethnic studies teacher in San Francisco Unified School District. In the wake of more black lives lost by police brutality and the escalated violence against grieving communities, we are looking to you to shift your priorities to actively address systemic racism in Daily City. While we appreciate the mayor's public statement about ongoing efforts to ensure accountability and transparency of the DCPD and these study sessions, Daily City falls short of addressing racism and anti-blackness in our community, especially when it comes to the police. We commend the efforts towards unity, but we must recognize that our community is not exempt from participating in systemic racism and anti-blackness. For a city that invests 40% of our overall city budget on police, it's time for Daily City to redirect police funding and resources towards sorely funded community needs, especially affordable housing and safe shelter, youth programs, community centers, libraries, immediate small business relief, education, and culturally relevant curriculum, mental health services, critical equipment for health workers, and resources for seniors impacted by the pandemic. We need action and progress now to protect black and brown lives, and we know it is possible. In June 2020 alone, we've seen dozens of city councils, county boards, school boards, and local commissions take action to disband and defund the police departments. Meanwhile, Daily City has delayed real and meaningful steps and actions, and we can change that. The city council's commitment to our two community demands in our petition will actively transform the interactions between our community and the police force, align our infrastructures and economic priorities to honor and uplift black and brown lives, and actively address racist beliefs and behaviors within the Daily City community. Our two demands sent to you all on June 8th have yet to be acknowledged and addressed. Since then, we've collected over 370 signatures and counting of people who are looking to you to be in solidarity and take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dos. Now Stephen.
Next is Mo Thomas Sacy.
Hello.
We can.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I thank for the opportunity to speak tonight. I believe and I read that this is a study session for the council. And I will base my comments on that. Let us be real about studying the facts and studying the statistics and the real facts of what's going on, what has been going on in our city, our neighboring cities and counties, and the way our forces here in Daily City has been responding. I recall the report from the last time we had this meeting of only 0.1% of the response needed force. And from what I understand, of the four incidents, there were no serious injuries, only one with minor injury. I've also asked questions lately to another officers, how many shifts they have. I was told that one of the shift, the three main shifts for the whole day has been eliminated, only two shifts right now. What's that mean? The time to respond to a serious incident is less, is lowered. That means it takes long to respond. There will be, imagine things happen at the mall. Imagine, God forbid, a call for a bomb squad. How long would it take to get a bomb squad to get to a serious situation? I see the, everybody has a cell phone. Imagine your mom, your wife, your sister, your daughter getting beat up and phones snatched from them because of an iPhone. Who's going to respond? Please look at the statistics. The California Youth Authority is closing. Where are those people going to go? Look at the effects of the bill that sent back the people from the state into the city and county. Look at the real statistics and let's find the answers. Do not equate defunding police from racism. Yes, the city needs to work on racism building program, but do not equate safety with the programs that we need to build our city on. My time is over and I would like to comment more when given the opportunity. Have a good night and thank you all.
Okay, next.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas Sacy. Okay.
Next person on the list is Frances Griarte.
Hi, everyone. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Thomas Sacy for those comments and for everyone here. So I want to say hello, Mayor, City Council, Daily City Police Department, and all of our concerned citizens. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Please know that I'm coming from a good place in my heart and that really wants to learn and also help heal my community. My name is Frances Griarte Fresca. I'm in the media. So I want to make sure that I know, I make it known that my viewpoints today reflect my own and not of my employer or any of its entities. I'm 46 years old. I've lived in Daily City pretty much all my life. I was a Daily City Dolphin. I was a volunteer for Operation Santa Claus. I was also a recipient when I was a low-income individual with my family. I love my city. I love my city. And I want to make sure people understand where I'm coming from and what my household looks like in hopes of not being misunderstood. I'm Filipino. My kids are half Mexican. My brother-in-law is black. My niece and nephew are half-black and Filipino. We are a multi-ethnic family. At our parties, you'll see white, Asian, black, Latino, and we have law enforcement in our family as well. And I love my family and our family loves each other. And we see love in our house and family gatherings. And it saddens me when we step out of the house and especially now, we see and feel a lot of division and everything is magnified. And my question to myself is how can I be a conduit or bridge for my community so that my city can feel like my home? I know we all have much to learn about each other and each other's experiences and perhaps those open talks can enlighten one another and change how we do some things. Our family over the years have had talks openly of the challenges or biases they face being black. Also talks about the challenges as being a police officer. And for both of those sides of my family, it's been very rough. Like in my home, we are not for one side or the other. We are for one side and the other. Also, I wanted to address how I, at some points in my life, have suffered from depression. And I know that there are, you know, mental health programs and resources are necessary. And I think though, that, you know, maybe having mental health professionals go out on calls for service with the police might actually be a good or one thing to explore as well, because I'm also concerned about how those mental health professionals may be in danger. And I don't know how much, because I know some of those mental health calls from also speaking to our family, my family members that are in law enforcement can sometimes not really turn out the way you'd like them to be. And then, you know, they would need to answer those calls for service as well. I just want to make sure that, you know, we also just talk about how if, if, if there is any defunding for the, for the, for the police department, I do have concerns about that as well, is that how will that change community policing and community safety? And so I'll see for the next time to have those statistics as well. So thank you very much. And I also am a supporter of having community services too. So I'm not, I'm definitely not against those things. So I'm trying to find a way to help all aspects of Daily City. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griarte.
Okay, next up is Tobin Galang.
Hello, my name is Tobin and I am a community organizer among Filipino youth in Daily City. And I'm also a student services provider at San Francisco State. And after hearing the presentation from Daily City Police, I can't help but think that, you know, we can't be, we can't settle and be content with the way things are. Yes, there, it's a small gain that chokeholds have been, have been banned. But I think that there's still so much more that can be done, especially with, in the way that, the way that there's so many other programs in, that can be, and social services that can be invested into, that can also be seen as, as a way of, as a preventative measure addressing the socioeconomic conditions that often force people into antisocial activities that have been criminalized by police and often put them at the, on the victim's end of excessive force. And that if we're able to, if we're able to really prioritize that in our city's budget, I think that real systemic change can start to be made. And that really, I also want to echo the call for pushing forward with forming, building formations in the local government in order to ensure police accountability under community control. And so like what's been mentioned already, but making sure that these community members would have some sort of say in the hiring, the discipline, the spending, the funding of police and as well as in the way that they should have a role in changing police protocol as well, not just, it shouldn't just be up to the police association and city attorneys. And additionally, also call, echoing that call for a human rights commission as this is very much a human rights issue, but also in terms of being able to address all the other human rights issues that are going on in, in the community in Daily City such as human trafficking that's been exposed within the community here. And yeah, so I just want to really echo all of those, all of those that have already been said, but really just make sure that it's being heard loud and clear by the city council to make a decision on this that is going to see some sort of concrete changes beyond near performative like sayings and small changes, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galang.
Okay, the last speaker, the last person we have registered for the Zoom that indicated they wanted to speak is Christine Fuller.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sylvester, Vice Mayor Renaldo, Council and Staff. I do agree, the unconscionable killing of George Floyd catalyzed outrage in our country and around the world and the nation. From, you know, police brutality, excessive force, and yes, excessive systemic racism does exist. I would like to echo the same movement for the other 12 lives that have been lost to oppression of police encounters. Sadly, racism exists in our society as a historical pandemic for people of color. People look at me, they look at me as a white person, but I am a person of color. To me, health equity is vitable, okay? Not denouncing any of the speakers, everyone has the right to the public voice. On the contrary, we, the public, must take a stance for public safety to be number one. As in every campaign platform, my oath as an EMT, the oath of office for the police department, and the well-being for our communities in Daily City. I will echo Officer Lee, 0.1%, that's four cases in history of the Daily City Police Department. Why the need for any human rights or oversight committee? I call to the question to my colleagues, I really call to the question. This has been existing 100 years, Daily City. Why? Why, why, why? If you defund, which is such a fearful term, and/or reallocate monies, sometimes we only have four officers on at a time. If I, as an EMT, am called to a shooting scene, an active shooting scene, I cannot go into that global scene's safety premise until it is cleared by PD, which may cost a life. So I'm speaking from an EMT. Also, a certain percentage is, I don't know if anyone knows, but a certain percentage of the operational cost, the budget is primarily for salaries, retirees, et cetera. So it's not just a $37 million budget. I hear a lot about people talking about other cities and what their movements are doing. I get it. But look at Vallejo. They went bankrupt. And since 2009, because they were defunded, there was a call, fatally shot, six suspects. So 20 people have been killed. So when you really want to talk about defunding our police departments, or better yet, reallocating, let's all be mindful of what areas of the budget will be observed. And if, if community programs on any level, it could be for court and rec.
Your, after your time is up, can you close for me?
I'll wrap up, sir. So if my, my solutions would be if there are any community programs that are not functioning, maybe look into that kind of reallocation, but, you know, I have never seen community bias on records. And sir, Mayor Glenn, I thank you all for your time and I really just want to echo, we really need to think about this. And having an oversight committee and a human rights committee, I do not agree with that. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Fuller.
Mayor, we do have one more person that shouted me that they would like to speak.
Well, what I would like to do, can you hold that person? Apparently, folks, we're going to allow them the opportunity to raise their hand. And while they're doing so, at least we can keep a record. What I'd like to do right now is address some of the chat questions. So it's kind of like a breather. So, and perhaps the chat, the answers to some of these chat questions may provide additional transparency to our group. All right. One of the items in chat is, did the city council unanimously decide to pass a measure that would arm the police force with additional 150 tasers immediately after passing a measure that supports black lives? Can anyone answer that, staff or the chief?
It was county.
Chief.
It was county.
Mayor Sylvester, this is Captain Christian. The chief stepped out for one quick second, but I'm unaware of any purchase of any additional taser resources anytime recently at all.
All right.
I believe that was an article possibly from San Mateo County?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Why are police officers sent to deal with mental health-related incidents when they aren't trained in mental health? It takes a therapist multiple years before they're allowed to go to work with clients with mental illnesses. But you allow a police officer who underwent less than six months of training to go respond to a mental health call? Could you answer that, Captain?
The question is to why we're asked to respond?
Yes.
Just as far as the resources that are available, statistically speaking, for 2019, we had 522 psychiatric evaluation cases. So that's on average, more than one a day, sometimes several a day. Of those, 96% of those, 502 of those cases were at the request of somebody from the community calling the police department. So it was again, the family, the friend, the concerned citizens should be seeing some type of individual under stress and asking for services. While we have some of the county resources that we described earlier, those resources are spread out for use throughout the entire county, so they're not available for immediate response. So that leaves the police department to be the first responder that can get there in a timely manner within the city that they operate and then diffuse the situation and try and call some of those additional county resources.
All right, thank you. I see one, can we get a youth-run food truck in Midway Village? They have many ideas. Who would that go to? City manager or follow-up for permitting and et cetera?
Business license and permitting, that can go run through my office.
Okay. Let's see. I guess the question has been answered, where can we find the data now? I believe that's on the use of force and that's been provided.
I did provide the link in the chat.
Why are the Daily City Police running a program to fund social programs when they are not trained to do so? And there are many organizations and the city is better suited to use those resources and choose social programs in a better equitable way. Looks like this sounds like more involvement and to provide the resources and perhaps responding back to the person here and, and provide what exactly we do do. And if there are other social programs, we would like to know about it. That's, that's what I gather. It came from Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lopez, you be more than willing to speak on it. I do see your hand up. So we'll move on to the next comment that I see here. Let's see, action plan. Uh, let's see, action plan. Uh, I would like the city to address racism against people of color in our community, like white privilege, exercising racial prejudice, verbal and/or physical abuse. I heard that this has occurred at our local Lucky Stores in Mission Plaza. That's a, a comment. Uh, where can we find the use of force data? Okay, that's been answered. Um, uh, again, from Mr. Lopez, uh, his question is, what is the process? Most police brutality does not get reported due to the limited ways members can report their incidences. Uh, Captain, can you answer that?
Uh, yeah, sure. So th- there are several ways that any of that can be reported. Um, it can be reported via online to our internal affairs unit, it can be reported directly to any supervisor within the police department, um, and it can be reported to any other individual within the police department uh through online means as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. I see another comment, someone's requesting a visual budget and breakdown of the entire municipal budget. I think it would be helpful for the community to see specifically how money's being spent. Uh, do we provide all of our budget information for the public uh for transparency?
We do, it is on our website.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and just for um, for the public's information, on July thirteenth, uh, we will be presenting to council the uh budget forecast uh in light of the pandemic. So that might be a, a meeting that the community would wanna turn, tune into as well. Some of the, the revenue challenges we'll be facing in the next few years. But yes, you're correct, Mayor, the budget is online.
Thank you, Ms. Mopie. Uh, as far as the- Uh, as far as the programs that the Daly City PD has donated or supported, I am wondering what percentage of this mainly youth population directed, directly benefited and supported the black community. Uh, I'll leave that up to uh the police department to uh get further information on that, if they can break down the stats. Um, another comment, forty percent of Daly City youth feel they have been discriminated by the police. Police are the last people they would turn to for help. This picture doesn't match the great community relations portrayed in the presentation. And there are a couple of links to review there. Uh, another comment, in the domestic violence case, a person abused would not go to the workplace of their abuser. So could we have a better system? That's for the uh police department, is a comment. Uh, the municipal budget is on the website, but really hard to discern. If the budget is for the people, it would be best it was easily readable and digestible. I tried many times to read and understand the budget myself, and it was challenging. It's just a comment. Do we not see the problems of reporting directly to the police when they are behind the abuse? Um, okay, I see two hands up, and uh I, we would like to uh move it from chat now and to address folks who have placed their hands up. So we'll begin with Mr. Gustavo Lopez. Mr. Lopez, you have the floor.
Uh, hello, uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Gustavo Lopez, I work at the Metro College Success Program at San Francisco State University. I'm also part of the Four North County Coalition. Um, before I even start, I just wanna give a, a quick stat just from the prisonpolicy.org. Uh, US police kill far more civilians annually. They, they kill on an annual basis over a thousand ninety-nine people. Uh, compare that to Canada, that kills thirty-six, Australia, twenty-one, Germany, eleven, the Netherlands, four, England, three, Japan, two, New Zealand, one, Iceland, zero, right? So uh, I just wanna say that real quick, um, just to give some perspective, right? And um, I'm not, I'm all about prevention, right? So even if we can say that the police are doing their job, everything's, you know, kumbaya, why wait till George Floyd, right? Um, people could have probably said that about Minneapolis, and then George Floyd happened, or Trayvon Martin, or Oscar Grant, and the list goes on and on. Um, I was a former teacher at South San Francisco High School, uh, and I did violence prevention for over eight years in San Mateo County, including Daly City, um, most of which I had to buy my own supplies, create my own programs. So it's very funny that we talk about the funding of police as a radical idea, but as an educator, we defund education every year, and that's not seen as something radical. I spend my time organizing after-school programs, working closely with youth and families to ensure a path that they have higher, higher education and teach them to become active community members. Um, actually, a lot of my work started at Neutral Territory that actually here in Daly City got torn down due to the building of the current moving, movie theater. But this actually happens to a lot of nonprofits who lose their funding, or are forced to close their doors for lack of funding and lack of support from their city. And I just wanna point out that we are living in a crisis. There's a pandemic going on, we don't have the infrastructure to address it, we don't have people, people don't have access to healthcare, we are basically expected to cure ourselves with no access to healthcare, we're told by our federal and state government to stay home, yet we have no money to pay bills, we have no funds for rent, food, and other needs, and we live in one of the most costly uh places in the country, you could even say in the world, which is the Bay Area, right? So we need a city that can help with rental assistance, homelessness, increasing social services, and especially during a time which economists are calling the worst recession that the country has ever faced, divesting from police makes sense. They take up the largest budget, they have been overblown, and this is not a Daly City, Daly City's fault, this is across the country because of the war on drugs, and the war on drugs has failed miserably. We have oh, we have the highest prison population in the state of the world, we're over two million people locked up, and nothing has changed. It has not solved the issue, right? Prevention is the key, and I, I think you should listen to the demands that are being talked about across the country, demilitize the police. They should not be looking like military armed Rambo's coming into our communities, right? Um, we need to also prioritize urgent needs for affordable housing, fam- for families, teachers, nonprofit workers, we need to invest in mental health and wellness services, we need a public disclosure of records of police misconduct, and we need-
Mr. Lopez, can you start closing up your time?
Yes, I'm, 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 I'm just two more points. And I believe that we need an oversight committee that has a firing capability to fire the chief of police if we feel as a community that they have failed us. Um, and again, I would ask the city, um, I actually would want the city council to answer, can we create a better way to report police abuse than going back to our abusers, right? If I've been abused, I'm not gonna go to the workplace of my abuser to report them because I do not feel safe. I'd rather have an independent body or go to some of these community organizations that could be a third party on oversight. So tha- that's uh, that's some of the things, thank you for your time, and, and I hope that you do implement these. And I also recommend you read uh The New Jim Crow, and I also say that to the police, read The New Jim Crow, so you can learn what's going on, and you can be on the side of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. All right, the next person we have is uh, Ms. Justine Santos.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everyone, Justine Santos. I'm a library trustee for Daly City, and I work as an organizing director for Californians for Justice, an organization working for racial justice in education. I appreciate this effort Daly City has made to hold these conversations with the community, to engage around issues related to systemic racism, anti-blackness, and its relationship to police brutality. These conversations are long overdue, and I stand with everyone today who was called to defund the police department, to reinvest in community services, program people, infrastructures that directly serve community needs like housing, transportation, health services, and education. The call to defund police is actually about reimagining how we create safety in Daly City. There can be safety when communities have what they need, but communities are not finding fundamental resources for survival. While I hear the lived experiences of some people that police have ensured their safety, we have also heard from many today that the sense of safety from police is not real for everyone, especially black people in other communities of color. That's why many of us are here for this conversation. I just wanna urge the mayor and the city council to listen with, to what the community is asking for. Organizations like Faith in Action and WILI have been on the ground, ensuring that youth and families' voices are at the forefront. Many residents came on today, including myself, and named full examples of where money can go. Listen to their demands as guidance for how to reinvest dollars. I also echo the need for a human rights commission and a police oversight commission, both of which need to be constructed with community members. If we strive to be a city of inclusion, equity, and justice, we should not shy away from understanding whether or not we uphold human rights in our city, and whether or not our police department is actually accountable to its people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Uh, let's see, who do we have next? Uh, Jose Villa Lobos, Mr. Villa Lobos, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, city council and um officers present. Um, I would just like to echo the calls for a human rights commission or, or, and/or police oversight commission. Um, I feel that like a lot of the conversation we've been talking about has definitely been focused on recent events, um, especially about use of force, but I would also like to throw out there that a police oversight committee would also look at issues that are also not just um use of force, just sort of how police perception in the community is. Once again, um, I brought this up last week, but last year when um, um, DCPD turned over a undocumented um resident here in Daly City to ICE, um, that was complete, you know, violation of California laws. Uh, this, this man was not committing a violent crime, he had just been pulled over for a, a, you know, parking violation, and he got handed over to, to ICE. Um, I would feel that's, um, we don't have to have an incident like George Floyd to happen. To then see, I don't know, as, as a Latino resident here in Daly City, I don't feel satisfied with how DCPD responded to that. I have not seen any sort of mending to the community. Um, uh, the, the numbers of the sort of, the PAL sort of activities and donations that DCPD showed nothing, no sort of um reparation towards the undocumented community here in Daly City. Um, so I just, I would fear if something like George Floyd happened here in Daly City, whether it would just kind of be brushed under the rug again. Um, also, just on the use of social media, I know DCPD, I've been following the, the Facebook page and Twitter pages for some time now. I feel they've been doing some improvements, obviously caught in the act of doing certain crimes, but when you read the crime bulletin, crime is being committed by everybody, by all races. Um, and my concern, and just to finish up, uh, my concern is just, you know, there's no patrolling of the comments, the comments seem to have this idea that only black and brown people are committing crimes in Daly City, and I feel like that's not necessarily the best use of um social media. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villa Lobos. Uh, next we have uh Ms. Teresa Faupoua.
Hi, um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for uh this opportunity, uh, Mayor, uh, and the rest of the council members. I appreciate having this conversation. I would like to, first, I would like to address all the good things that the DCP has performed or has uh shown to the members in the community, and not just Bay Shore, and to, to some of the people I know. Um, the DCP, um, Mr. Hensley has um provided so much compassionate and um passion for the Bay Shore seniors community. They came out of their way and, and took, took them to, to lunch. They provided on their own, and just looking at how they treated and respected our, our seniors. I was raised from the island to know how to respect elders. And uh, back home, we respect the police. We didn't have no problems with them. And I know that everybody is asking for defunding our police department, and I'm here to say, to reconsider that. We have not, Daly City, we have not had any issues related to what we have with um what unfortunate events that happened to our brother, George Floyd. So I don't want us to use that as an example to come back to our police station, uh, to our police department, and defund them. And for, to have a commi- uh, uh, another commission, we already have one in the city. We just need to restructure them or reform them. So come together. This is defunding the police department, it's not the answer. And I don't think that it will be able to solve anything. I think that we should consider having a police department, they come out there, I've seen it, they have shown themselves, they have come to and help our community, and be there and help our children. We just need to come together and build together the city of Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faupoua. Um, all right, I know uh there's gonna be more folks who wanna speak, however, I don't see any hands, so I would like to start opening up to some of the comments that we received. Uh, Stephen, I, I think we received about three hundred and forty-six uh, uh, letters amongst the council, and the city manager was correct, we didn't have time to read them all. I, I read about hmm hundred and fifty of them. However, I, I did notice a common thread, and the thread was that uh, some of them appeared to be like on a template form, and they were the same. So can you pick out a few of those that uh were basically the same uh and I, and um bring it to our attention? So we're gonna open it up now until I see some more hands come up for a few comments that have been uh sent to the city.
Okay. I can start with the form letter that we received today, it's called Keep Daly City, the, the title is Keep Daly City Safe: No Need to Defund or Create a Daly City Police Oversight slash Human Rights Commission. Daly City is one of the safest cities, consistently ranked, rated in the top one hundred cities in the state of California year after year. Daly City is safe because of the highly-trained police department. There have, they have one hundred and one diverse police officers, whites, fifty-one percent, blacks, eight percent, Hispanics, eighteen percent, Asian, fifteen percent, Pacific Islanders, four percent, and other, three percent, which for a city of this size, there should be more police officers. As an example, in nineteen ninety-four, there were one hundred and twenty-one Daly City police officers. For many years, the Daly City police officers have been understaffed and underfunded. Still, they continue to do more with less. Daly City population continues to increase while the amount of police officers continue to decrease. Daly City police officers are visibly engaged in the community. Through Police Athletic League, or PAL, they do fundraising to support children and youth in sports, helped fund the new turf soccer field at Woodrow Wilson Elementary, supporting numerous community events such as National Light Out, Daly City Public Library Associates Annual Crazy for Cars, assisting Second Harvest Distribution at several locations, supporting PBRC events, Pacific Islanders Together, Christmas in the Park, supporting underserved community in the Bay Shore, and other diverse events. The Daly City Police Department is actively involved in many Daly City nonprofit organizations. Still, the Daly City Police is understaffed for a city of this size, sometimes leaving only six officers to protect their residents and businesses throughout the night. In nineteen ninety-four, Daly City Police had eight community resource officers, and today they only have one. At one time, DC Police had six traffic motorcycle officers, now they only have two. The Daly City Police Department has always been very transparent with the community. As an example, they are, are one of only three police departments in the state of California that presents all use-of-force data on their website. Should there be an incident, the Daly City Police have reviewed protocols, in addition to policies and procedures already in place with chain of command. Also, non-police oversight, including Daly City Personnel Board slash Commission, Daly City Human Resources, Daly City City Attorney, Daly City City Manager, and Daly City City Council. If necessary, the San Mateo District Attorney's Office can be brought in to conduct independent investigations. There is no need to create a police oversight commission or a human rights commission that only have an advisory role. City of Daly City's annual operating budget is approximately ninety million. Daly City Police Department budget is approximately thirty-seven million. Comparable cities in San Mateo County with less population, less crime, and work with a much larger city operating budget and police department budget. Instead of demanding to defund Daly City Police and create a police oversight or human rights commission, let us support and work with our police department. Daly City Police does not have systemic issues as other cities do nationwide. Why punish a good police department? Instead, let's create positive community engagement. This one had three hundred and forty-three uh copies delivered today. Um, we also, we, would you like me to continue, Mayor?
Uh, please do.
Okay. Um, through our virtual meeting website, um, we also received a few comments. The first is from Phyllis and Norman Rizzi, and it says, "We are privileged to live in a city where our police department is not only a well-organized law enforcement agency that ranks us in a top California safe city, but engages in active community interface. The diversity in the multicultural department matches our multicultural city, resulting in a mu- mutual respect for all residents. DCPD's community outreach serves a model for the young and the feeling of well-being for the senior population. Defunding the department would take, defunding the department would take away programs that make this unique bond between us. We are very grateful to have this combination of strong law enforcement and personal engagement." The next comment is from Kevin Santos, and it says, "As a Daly City resident and physical education teacher in the Bay Shore community, I am concerned with the lack of action toward proposed measures. The council has been urged to-" The council has been urged to develop a community police oversight commission and to pledge a commitment to reprioritizing the city's police budget by allocating funds toward essential needs and services. We need to take immediate action to improve the conditions of our community." And the next one is from Elena Mogwell. It says, "As a public health advocate and working health professional, it is alarming to see that forty percent of funds of the city's budget is allocated to Daly City Police. More funding should be designated towards youth programs, community-based programs, social services, and essential needs." The next statement is from Sal Torres, and it says, "I am concerned that before this council makes a final decision on the calls to defund the PD, much more information and collaboration with our police department take place so that it is an informed decision, a decision that balances well the safety of the public, which has been the hallmark of this city, against what should be done to reduce and eliminate any and all bias, discrimination, and violence against our community. During my twenty years on the council, the DCPD always provided excellent police services and helped our city establish itself as one of the safest cities in America. I believe that distinction remains even today. In short, our DC Police Department should be kept separate from those police departments that have been proven to be deadly to their communities. This is simply not the case here in Daly City. That alone should be a bright guidepost for this council as it balances the community calls for changes. Here are some ideas I leave up to this learned council, the police leadership, and the public, of course, to decide. Rather than defund the PD budget, can we not explore how to redirect current police funding into a community police division? We had at one time several officers who were designated community police officers who helped establish and groom the relationships between the city, the public, and the department. How about redesigning the PD budget away from purchasing new police vehicles and additional equipment to a community police officer commission? This commission made up by the PD chief, city council, and the public could outline the areas that most need to be addressed and reallocate a portion of current funding to developing the various ideas that flow out of such a commission. That way, the same money is used, but more fruitfully by the PD and, of course, for the benefit of the public. Other ideas that I suggest be explored are review of minor offenses and how they are enforced. If we have laws that criminalize minor offenses, examples are trespass, possession of minor drugs, then this, then the council should consider how to repeal such a law. That would remove enforcement, but it also reduces the exposure of possible harassment on certain un-harmful crimes. Again, community policing would help curb those offenses. So no more, so no more patrols rolling in pairs to a trespass on the front lawn. Have police staff, have police staff crisis units that are needed for people with mental health concerns. Staffing officers to do that can also serve to sensitize police to the issues afflicting many and create a more robust and holistic understanding of what is happening in our city. Lastly, working with police leadership, develop new methods of legal constraints. One where use of police force is eradicated in place of more pragmatic, non-physical methodologies. For example, no use of tasers or guns in situations that could be resolved by early intervention techniques or community police efforts. Rethinking how we police should be exhausted completely before any more drastic action is considered. Thank you for your time. And Mayor, that is all the comments we received for this particular study session.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephen. What I'd like to do is turn it over to the community online. And we have, well, we have approximately ten more minutes, but I want to use this for your time, so if you want to make a comment, please raise your hand and we will hear you out. Okay, not hearing anything, what I would like to do is allow myself and council to proceed in closing this meeting at this time. Once again, I would like to thank everyone for being here on the call. And as I may have mentioned, no decisions are being made as a result of this meeting, but however, some good ideas did come about at this meeting, and staff is going to look into this, even myself. I did see a lot of great ideas and possible ways that we can move forward to ensure that, number one, Daly City remains safe and strong. Number two, to create a mechanism so that the community becomes more aware as to what our officers do to maybe include maybe some non, what's the right word? Non-threatening, whether the use of a community police unit. And, and, but some great ideas did come out of that. So what I would like to do is, again, I thank everyone, and that's my comments for this evening. Vice Mayor, Justine, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really want to say thank you to everyone here on the line and those that have sent any letters for your suggestions around ways we can move forward. And I, I thank you for your patience. You know, we are responding by having these meetings and basically these dial, this dialogue to hear from each and every one of you. And it's not meetings to just listen and not take action. And I just want to reiterate that to the community that's on the line. I think as responsible community leaders, it's important to hear from each and every one of you and then be able to take your input and really be able to see what we can do as we move forward. And once again, I thank each and every one of you for your time and continue to participate and we'll keep you informed on any other meetings moving forward. And I, I know that we are here to listen and not only not take action. I think that's why these meetings started, was really around responding and trying to listen to the, all of the community as a whole. And so I, I know many of you have taken time out of your day in this afternoon, but I just want to say, you know, we're, we hear you, we're listening, and please continue to be active and involved as we will continue further to address this issue. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the community for all this tremendous and valuable input. I thought it was very enlightening. And as you said, there's, there were a lot of good ideas that came out of it. And now it's about us trying to figure out what are the right solutions moving forward. So I thank you for the input. This has been tremendous and looking forward to working on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Dr. Rod, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to everybody that participated in this open session. As an educator myself, I welcome like different points of view, perspectives, ideas, and hopefully we can come towards a consensus on terms of where we want to go. You know, when we talk about black, black matter, it's more to, at least systemic change, it's more than policing. It's, it's the curriculum that's in, in the books. It's the, the housing in the Bay Area. It's all these different institutions that are, that revolve around oppression and systemic racism. So I urge everybody to go out there and do their research. I know there's people on the chat that have put out links to different things, read books. I heard Michelle Alexander's The New Jim Crow, please read that. And then just want to say thank you, and I, I hope we have, as a council, I promise we'll, we'll have action moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Councilmember Dejivani.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you to the community. Now that we have every different perspective, which is great. It gives a better feel. The first one, it was great. Now we have a bill and the word is getting out. There's a lot of outreach, and I'd like to thank Stephen Polte for doing that, the staff and our city manager. They've done an excellent job of trying to reach out, and I want you to know that every, every voice matters. So I think we take it pretty seriously. And probably for some of you probably didn't realize that the, some of the things that we did have in place, and perhaps as we move forward, that, you know, when you speak of rent and things of that nature, that our Daly City partnership, maybe we can go a little bit more depth about how we already, we do have rental assistance that the city provides funds for and things that you probably don't know about that, that maybe we didn't do such a great job of letting you guys know that we do have resources in place for our Daly City youth, mental health, and things of that nature. Not to say we can't have other resources as, for, you know, for everybody in our community. I'm just saying that I want to make sure that you know that. And then when you speak forty percent, I welcome when you guys do great research. I know that's an alarming number. Please look at Redwood City and the city of San Mateo for comparisons on the lower end of their population, but yet their funding is higher. So I think that, yes, understandably, if you see something that says forty percent, but I, I respectfully, because you guys are well-educated, a community, but dive a little deeper and look into that, and I think that as somebody, I think, can dive into that a little bit deeper and see what is in our budget and how we have been. I think it was mentioned the last time that had been cut for a while in our city budget for a prior city manager, not the current one, so on our police. So, but great ideas. It is about the community as well, and we want to remain a safe city. So, and they are involved in a lot of our communities. So moving forward, what we'd be able to break it down, hopefully even better, to let people know what more is in our community. Thank you very much to everyone. Thank you, Mayor, and my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Dejivani. You brought up a good point that there are some things that the public does not know about.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm going to reach out to Ms. Malpe, and maybe you can compile some of the resources that our city has put out to very essential needs for this city pre-COVID nineteen and now during COVID nineteen. And Councilmember Dejivani just alluded to that in the area of housing, to which we normally give eighty thousand a year, and we managed to work it out and now have shot that up for rental assistance to over one million dollars. So I, I think having the group know about that and how we are working through this pandemic, amongst other things as well, but as a city, we have done very well, and we will continue to do well, and we understand that comments from our community and constituents are very important to us. So I thank you very much. All right, with that being said, I'd like to thank everyone. Please stay tuned for any further, and we really appreciate you being here this evening and spending your time with us. This was very productive. Thank you all. Good night. Stay healthy. We are Daly City Strong.
Good night.
Good night.